Next, we have projected housing development and growth. Dr. Swift?
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. As you could tell from the first half of our evening together, we have a lot of work to do to pace our bonds with our construction and our purchases. And as you could tell, trustees, that's not just a partway game. We have to be very explicit and very clear on that. One would like to think that that's the only focus, and yet we know it's not. There is also this very clear picture that Mr. Latzahn and Mr. Dimitri authorized with our external firm that assessed every single building. Trustees, you're aware because you've flipped through them, there are thousands of pages of very detailed reports on the condition of every part of every building, the life cycle of every system. So trustees, you know, we also have to gauge and set our compass as well to the condition of buildings and the point at which trustees were deteriorating and it's going to cost us more money or cause distress for children and staff. The third area among a few more, but these are the three we'll emphasize right now, is we must plan for additional enrollment arriving into the Ann Arbor community. And trustees, you're not like a charter or a private entity where you could just say, "We're full." You are obligated, when you raise your right hand and swear an oath, to accommodate and be prepared for every student who's coming to us. And we love that obligation, and we welcome students every day. Trustees, you know, we've added 1,532 students over the course of the previous six years. That's the size of a high school, is what we've added in Ann Arbor. So the question for this evening is, where and how many are coming next? So we've appreciated in the past the help of Mitchell Moat and Dick Mitchell and Kevin Stansberry, who've worked with our schools. They have been parents in our school district. They know our school buildings intimately. And so I appreciate that over several months, they've engaged with every township and with our city, and they've clarified what developments are in progress, how many new units, single-family, multifamily, are coming, and approximately the number of students who will be coming out of those new developments. Now trustees, you know, unfortunately, we don't get 100% of students in the Ann Arbor community who attend our schools. So when you see these numbers, we would take an 80% or 90% figure on those. But what is important, and you can see the drawings here, you're going to see them, two looks at those. What is important is what schools will be impacted and what is the timeline. So as we're laying out our bond sale, we're laying out the condition of properties, we also have to lay out where are the students arriving. It's a wonderful giant puzzle, and we're delighted that you're at the table this evening. And please join me in welcoming Dick and Kevin from Mitchell Moat.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. As Dr. Swift mentioned, this is an update. This is the third time we've been here, and there are two changes in this look at housing development. And we're focused only on housing development. This time, instead of just looking at the city as we have in years past, we've included the townships that the district is in. And you can see by looking at this map, I'll just point out briefly, that Washtenaw County is divided into 20 equally sized townships. And we are in eight of them and adjacent to a ninth. So the townships you can see here are Ypsilanti, Pittsfield, Lodi, SIO, Northfield, Salem, Superior, and Ann Arbor Township used to encompass where the city is now and now has the north and east boundaries of the city. So we extended the study into the townships. And the last time we talked to you, we had also included the high-rise housing that you see developing in downtown Ann Arbor. And the thinking was, we knew that it was primarily student housing. But when the zoning in the city of Ann Arbor changed to D1, D2, that allowed 10- and 12-story buildings, the thinking, the hope, was that enough students would be housed in those buildings, that it would free up some of the former single-family neighborhoods to revert to single-family, which might have a trickle-down effect on the attendance in some of our city districts. And what we have found, that growth coincided with growth of the University of Michigan student body. They have increased about 4,400 students in the last four to five years. And in the four to five years preceding that, the university only increased about 300 students. So it's a marked increase. The university only provides housing for about 25% of their students. So both the single-family neighborhoods that have student housing, converted student housing, will continue to have that, as well as the student high-rises. So we just took all of the high-rises that you see going up along Washtenaw and here on Washington, South University, Main Street, we've taken them out of the mix. We don't think we're seeing an impact there. So as we looked at this, we found there were... Each township and each jurisdiction is allowed to undertake its own master planning and write its own ordinances. And attitudes within the townships in terms of growth and the supply of utilities varies. Pittsfield Township, which is the township immediately south of Ann Arbor, encompasses, this is the district line meandering through these townships, a little over half of Pittsfield Township includes Ann Arbor Public School Attendance Zones. This township, Pittsfield, receives water from the City of Ypsilanti Water Service, Water and Sewer. And so development is pretty robust in Pittsfield Township. Another one, the second most robust, is SIO up here, who receives water and sewer from the City of Ann Arbor and has devoted it to this corridor, which is Jackson Road. And you can see all the development. These yellow and green designations are the housing developments that are occurring. The yellow ones are housing that has been either approved or is under construction. Most of them are under construction. And the green color that you see here and here, for example, are under review. They're going through the planning process. So in looking... We were able to determine precisely, you know, how many duplexes, how many single-family homes, how many apartments, how many townhouses are going up in various locations. And translating that into student population is where it stops being a science and starts being a little more of an art. There are several entities that provide multipliers to apply to that. SEMCOG has one, MISTHA has one. We've been using the American Planning Association, which gives us a mean number from nine different studies that it undertook. And the number of students per household ranges from a high of .94 for single-family homes to a low of .08 for market-rate apartments. So they're all in that range. And so we applied those factors to the units that we found in that. That's how we came up with our student determinations. So let's see, grab the right button. So here is a jurisdiction-wide summary of everything that's happening. There are detailed sheets for each of these jurisdictions that you see on the left that I'm not going to take you through, but I will talk briefly about this summary. The single families, I just said, is the one that jumps off the page most at us. In previous years, we have been looking at just the City of Ann Arbor. And as you can see right now, there are 263 single-family homes either that have been approved or are under construction in the city. And that is from a total of 1,061. So about 25% of the single-family construction within the Ann Arbor School District is in the city. More is in SIO Township, and more is in Pittsfield Township. And that's significant because that is our highest factor. So the number of students using the factors that we talked about in K-12, so all grades, coming from the city, from housing that is currently under construction or approved, is 753. From SIO Township, it's 495. And from Pittsfield, it's 423. And it drops off fast to Ann Arbor Township of 62. The remaining townships, Superior, Lodi, Webster, Northfield, and Salem, all have very, very limited growth. There is spotty single-family homes here and there, but not large developments. And then projects that are under review in the same jurisdictions is a similar story. You can see that the City of Ann Arbor accounts for 18 single-family houses under review from a group of 714. And suddenly, Ann Arbor Township comes into play. This is due to a rather unique development that is in the very, very early stages, too early to even be called under review. But we do know that a modular housing project is coming up in Ann Arbor Township, and we'll be going through the process. And because it was such a big number, we thought you should be aware of it. It would impact the Wines District, as we'll talk about in a little bit. SIO has another 177 under review. So Dr. Swift was talking about this map. So you can... It's striking to see the difference between how a surveyor lays things out in the township grids and how a committee establishes boundaries. There's a little more movement to the committee boundaries. So each of these boundaries represents the attendance district of one of the elementary schools. So for example, Lawton is this shape down here. Lakewood is this purple one that meanders here. Hazely School is... Well, Hazely's district is out here, but the actual school is up in this area. Some of the districts bounce around. Allen, for example, has three different attendance zones. So by chance, as much as anything else, you can see the amount of construction that is occurring in Hazely. That was striking. Others are Carpenter and had a good amount. Wines is that one development that I talked about. Logan is an area we had talked about and visited with some of you a few years ago. That's due to all of that development that you see on Nixon and Duvera and up in the northern part of the city. Looking for Logan is... I'm having trouble reading it, but Logan is another one that is being impacted by development. So let me look at these individually. So when we looked at the elementary schools, we reduced the number of K-12 students to 46% of that total. 46% corresponds to the number of current K-5 students we have. We included in that Ann Arbor STEAM and Ann Arbor Open and took 2/3 of each of those buildings, which would represent the K-5 part of their population. And we arrived at 46% as the current percentage of K-5 students we have. So we were able with that to look at the various districts and come up with a pretty good count. This is split into two. I'm going to skip down to Hazely. Here is the largest one that you can see. So at this point in time, there are... We're estimating 208 students for whom housing is being built within the Hazely Attendance Zone. Next is Logan at 158, right here, followed by Ann Arbor STEAM at 98, and followed by Carpenter. Have to go up one. Right here at 93. Then goes down to Dickinson at 65, Mitchell at 54, and Brian Pengele at 44. So there's some striking realities out there in terms of what we might be seeing in student growth. 208 students in one of the elementary schools is daunting. I should point out that we, in the end, the district gets, as Dr. Swift said, about 80% of those students. The other 20% go to Prokial and private and charter schools. So then these numbers that you see should be reduced by 20%, we would estimate. I think that that covers it. And I see questions.
On this page.
Sure.
Sorry. Thank you. Since we're on this page, I just wanted to ask this question. Duplexes. And then you have condos.
Yes.
And you showed 236 at Logan duplexes. Are you count... I thought those were all condos.
No, there are some duplexes in under construction and under review. That number then that you see as the multiplier for duplexes, which is slightly over one, is because it counts for the two units of the duplex. So for each unit, it's about half that. But there are developments that are calling themselves duplexes.
Okay.
So we applied the APA standards.
Okay. And the reason for using the AP, the American Planning Association standards versus SEMCOG or what was the other one?
MISTHA.
MISTHA multiplier. Would it... How... Would they differ?
No, they were quite similar. And we liked APA because it took, I think, eight districts within the U.S. and one in Ontario. The districts were in the state of New York, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Illinois, Washington State, and one or two others. And it was just a little more broad study, and they gave us the mean number from those. It struck us as the best of the options. But we could easily add other measures to it. And as I said, and as you cross this line, it becomes a little more of an art. And there are some unique things I should mention in Ann Arbor. For example, the lower-town development that you see going under construction at Broadway and Maiden Lane is probably geared highly towards medical students. And so we applied the .08 number to that.
Oh, so those numbers, that development is in these numbers here?
It is, which would mean one out of every 12 units would have a child, a school-aged child. And we don't know. The developers are quite open in telling us they will rent or sell to whomever comes through the door. And so it's hard to be precise about that.
Trustee Gainer.
Dr. Swift, this is probably for you. Thank you for including the update we received two years ago. Is there any way or do we know how well the estimates from two years ago played out?
It's a great question. There are areas where we're right on target with what was projected, and then there are areas where it's happening but at a slower rate than maybe we thought. And one of those, as I think the trustees are aware, is like the Clegg area, that we absolutely have received the elementary students that we anticipated. But middle is coming on a little more slowly. So I don't know if that indicates that the families who are purchasing are maybe a little younger, or their children obviously are younger. But at any rate, we have been well-prepared in every location that we needed to be, and perhaps still have a little room at Clegg. So I feel like it's worked out really well. I feel like we added those modulators, trustees, just a step ahead of when we needed them. Every one of the modulators except Carpenter's is full, and Carpenter's will be full very shortly. So the reality is, and you're going to see these numbers very shortly, the elementary schools are absolutely full, with the rare exception of a few seats at Hazely, thankfully, because we're going to need them, and a few seats at Abbott. And as you all know, Bri-Patt has some room. But other than that, the remainder of our elementaries are very, very full. The middles have a little bit of room, not a lot, and the high schools have room, with the exception of Pioneer is quite filled.
And Dick, this formula, it talks about the number of K-12 students, but you also have some individual students. So this formula includes the percentage of families who would choose Ann Arbor schools over private schools or other?
It does not. We have not reduced these numbers by that 20%.
Okay.
For families who...
The 20%? That's for that key?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But on that note, trustee, would you speak to preschool? Because we are full at preschool, I note. So would that be included in these numbers, Dean?
It is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We might have better information after the census. It is easier to get information from developers before the sale, but they're quite protective of privacy issues in divulging who is buying. And so it's... We can work with averages, but we can't work with precision. Maybe census information will help us with that, which is coming up soon, so.
No questions? So, oh, trustee Lazarus?
Do we have an idea of the projects that are currently under construction, when they will actually are projected to be completed? Do we have any idea?
Yeah, we do. We have not committed that to paper. It's from driving through each development. And those that are farthest along, I can tell you, are in the Pittsfield Township area along the southern region of that township. And they are built, or the lots are planted, with sold signs up and down them, and foundations are being poured. It's pretty shocking if you take a drive down that way. The same holds true out the Jackson corridor. There are several developments about a mile, well, half a mile this side of Zee Road on Jackson, if you go into the east. You'll be surprised.
I see that... When is the two projects in Ann Arbor Township, the North Brook and the North Oaks and Owl Creek? I think Owl Creek is done.
There, yes.
But North Oaks, it looks like there's a Phase 2 going on right now.
There is, yeah. It's a multi-phase project. There's a lot.
Is there a third phase?
Yes.
Because it looks like there's a lot of empty land that's already...
Yes, there is, yeah.
...excavated for...
And it's contiguous with Woodbury and one other development. So it's hard to tell where one ends and the other one starts, but...
Are they full?
I don't know that. Yeah, they're hesitant to give me those numbers. We did go out and ask, and...
Knock on doors?
We respected their privacy, yeah.
Got any kids in there?
Well, there was a school bus.
Other questions? I actually do have a very quick question. So you talked about the estimates, and when you jump over the line, it's more of an art than a science. And we heard from our last presentation, when they were making projections, they tried to be somewhat conservative in those projections. Can you speak to your level of conservatism here? I mean, are you trying to predict this almost to the number? Are we looking more conservatively?
No, we use the most conservative of the measures that we saw. In previous presentations to you, we were applying the birth rate of 1.19, I believe, per single-family, and now we're down to .94. So we've ratcheted down when there is a reliable measure that we can use for that reason.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Dimitri, you may need to come forward for this, but trustees, this is a study session, so we're a little more informal. I guess as we on our team look at this map, it's clear to us that if the board is supportive, we will need to continue to use some modular expansions in order to meet the timelines because we know our bond piece. I just don't know that our bond is going to allow for this number all at one time. So I would be interested in hearing the board. We were very intentional four years ago about creating the structure of the modular, and it's possible that over the coming 20 years, we can move those modulators, which was the thinking of the board years ago. But I do believe that at least some of us had perhaps hoped that we weren't going to deploy further modulators. And considering the weight of these numbers, Marius and I have discussed it. I know, Emile, you've been thinking about this. It is entirely possible that that's a discussion we'll need to have as early as right now, potentially. So Marius, do you want to comment on that, or Emile?
You know, I know it's startling to see it, and you see it where it's happening. I think we probably need to figure out which year they're going to be completed. When do we expect to see? And how fast are these units going to be filled and those kind of things? And I know we need to be ahead of it, and this is the first time, you know, seeing it as a group, so.
Trustee Lazarus?
Thank you. I'd like to piggyback off of that theory that it kind of goes to my first, my last question, that we need to, I think we need to look at when these projects are actually going to complete and what are their current capacity? Are they leased out? Are they sold? Are they having trouble selling them because the price points are too high? You know, just because they're built doesn't mean that they're sold. So I think we need to have those kinds of discussions before deciding to put more modulators in, and then we can make a decision if that is a necessary option. And if there's another option... And if there's another option out there also, I mean, I hate modulars. I'm sorry.
And I do want to say.
But I know we can't have the kids out in the field, but.
It takes about a year to, you know, for planning, for designing, and going through all the permits and so forth that we need to go through, you know, for a modular. For a regular school, it takes longer, probably 18 months to two years. So even though we might have discussions today, it's probably not this summer, it's probably in the fall of the summer.
And yet now is our timeline for those decision points here in the next few weeks. The other question, trustees, that you all have discussed, is the moderate cost of a modular and the lesser risk of it as opposed to permanent construction. So it's possible, I know, I'm confident that we'll blend this approach, but the point is to be ahead of students arriving and not behind. And then the other question that you all ask is, will the students moving into these units be coming out of another unit and already belong to us? That is a question no one knows the answer to, and one that we will need to continue to monitor as we go.
As trustee Basquet, you had a comment or a question?
No, I was just going to echo what Mr. Demetrius and Dr. Swift have said. Our experience is we've got to be prepared, and it takes time. It's nice to be able to say, we can go to a developer and say, are all of your units sold? But he or she has no obligation to tell us that information. And he or she may not know how many children are coming, are in the home, and where they plan to send their children in terms of education. But we would be negligent if we weren't prepared to receive them. We'd be better in a position to do that. As I've spoken to Kevin and Dick, I have had arguments with, well, not necessarily arguments, but insistence, conversations with our elected bodies, our governmental bodies, is let us know when you're going to be doing development, especially in terms of public housing sites, because again, that's a government entity. They do have better knowledge on their residents than, and should be more willing to share, because I remember that experience we had with Abbott, I believe. And it was a surprise, and it was not a fun surprise to have in the fall when you have children there, and especially the composition of some of these families. So we've got to be in a position to be ready. I would be very interested in hearing, as we do this research, the experience of the families with modulars. If you'll remember, Dr. Swift, we had a lot of hoopla about, you know, how unsatisfying these modulars would be. And at least from my experience in visiting the schools, it's quite the opposite. And we've seen video of the children of the families who like them a lot. So it'll be interesting to see, again, if we can document some of that, maybe do an update on those schools that we don't have videos on, and listen to some of the feedback that we received as we rolled out the modulars, if you will. We just cannot afford to be caught off guard, folks. And so I really appreciate the work that you guys have done, especially including the townships. And I, again, would encourage developers and anyone who knows about prospective housing to talk with us, just to help them prepare. I know I've talked with a few families already who are looking to move to our district, and, you know, they're worried about missing parent orientation night and things like that. It's like, look, our school doors are open. We are a public school. If you can't make the parent orientation night, fine, let's schedule something for you with your children. But we want to be prepared. We want our families to feel welcomed as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. Maybe it would be helpful to get a reminder of where modulars currently are. I know we've got Burns Park, Mitchell, Thurston.
Thurston, King, Wines.
Carpenter.
And Carpenter.
So in five sites. Did I miss somebody?
I think there's someone missing.
There's six.
Yes.
So there's Thurston, King.
That's it.
Mitchell, Wines.
Mitchell has two of them.
Yes.
Right.
And I will share, for the trustees who weren't on the board at the time, the modulars were never intended to be permanent construction. So it was always a method to manage growth over the short term. The worst thing a district can do is spend a lot of money building something that you don't need for the long term. And I've been in districts that have made that mistake, and it's hard to know for sure. But the modular does allow that ability to flex on that piece. So trustees, I'm glad we're having this discussion, and I'm sure that we'll come to some conclusions. I've taken a note that we'll work with our Mitchell Moat partners to get dates on these numbers or general idea, so that we can start to be more specific.
I have a question. As a member who was not here when the modulars were talked about, what is the size? How many students? I know there's four classes.
Or six, in the newer ones.
How many students?
In a big, common instructional gathering space in the middle of them. And so it's either 100 students or 150, depending on which. Our early additions were the smaller, four-classroom ones, and then our last several have been the six classrooms. And this brings up a point, trustees, if anybody wants a tour, we absolutely will set that up. These are not the modulars we had at Pioneer during, some of you experienced them. These are much different. They are prized at the school because they're air-conditioned, the classrooms are larger, and there are nice, huge windows in each classroom, which is not always true in our classrooms in the older buildings, so.
Trustee Kelly.
Yeah, I agree. These are not the old trailers of generations ago. These are really quite building-like, and I've been impressed with the use of them. I do see the modular, I remember the conversation about putting modulars, it really being, you know, we're going to use it, make sure they come. Turns out they came. And then the ability of the modulars, though, to then, to be that stopgap as we saw growth around the district was something that was very attractive to me at the time. And the reason I was curious, the locations, because I wanted to compare them to where it looks like we have growth. And a few of our sites are expecting some students, Mitchell in particular here, is expecting another 54 students on one of these tables. I'm sorry, I don't have a page number to reference. And we know that, you know, with their two modular sections now, they're going to need the space.
They do.
So I would really, for one, be in favor of asking the team to look at this incredibly complex puzzle, you know, it's really a four-dimensional puzzle with the time component added in, and think about whether the timeline of building something permanent in one of the places that we know is not going to shrink, and then taking that modular unit and moving it to the next bubble, if there's a way to make that timeline work out. And I know it's complicated, but I really think that would fulfill kind of the way that we had gone into the modular world originally a couple of years ago.
Right.
And I think it would feel really good to have some solid, permanent building in place. And frankly, I would even be open to the conversation if there's a modular unit at one of these campuses that we know is going to need the space. The modular is currently situated in a place where we would build anyway. If there's a way to make the modular permanent, I know that prefabricated construction isn't a bad thing, that built on site versus prefabricated is sometimes, prefabricated is a more sustainable option. There's much less waste in many cases. If there's a way to make permanent some of these modular things that we know we're going to need because it's already an optimal space, I'd be interested in looking at what kinds of finishes or what kind of connectors, if the building needs some additions anyway, how to, you know, make it a cohesive unit, and talk about, you know, sort of taking the next step in this phase of building out that we see coming. So that's complicated, but I figure it's a study session, and it's sort of conversational, so that's where I am with that.
I know that the vision of the trustees and of all of us is to build permanent, beautiful buildings. I just felt like we needed to cross that bridge, seeing that some of this is coming pretty quickly.
And I just wanted to say, well, a couple of things. One, I don't know if my question about the, about how you estimated the size made you think about that, but that's exactly what I was wondering, if you build anticipating that you have to hit that number so you have the actual physical construction to accommodate, or if you're more conservative, understanding that you might be able to add modulars, et cetera. My thought on it, in the short term, is that I'd want to look at which schools and where, and which we'll do anyway. I think the earlier point that you made, and trustee Basquet made, about our commitment to the community and the requirement that we accommodate students, just makes, I mean, we have to do it, we have to do it. The other, my other question is, can we, on the next iteration of this, can we just have a version with the converted number? I mean, I know we're looking at this, and we're saying 80% of this number that's here. Is there a reason why we couldn't just have, instead of the 52 or whatever, it says 43, so it does that conversion? Or was there a reason that we left it how it is?
I'm really grateful for that question, and I should have said this earlier. Best practice is that our schools would be 80% full. That is best practice standard across the country. Since four or five years ago, we've not been able to achieve that goal at elementary. Our schools are far more full than 80% for the most part. Some of them are above 100%, as you all are aware. Certainly, we have a desk for every child, a classroom, our classroom sizes are being managed beautifully, but our schools are full. A point of pride is that it is possible that we'll get 95% of kids moving into the area, and our obligation as a public school system is to be prepared for all of the children that live in the area. So we're happy to amend the chart, but our responsibility is to be ready for that many students.
So then, if we manage to this number here, and let's say we only hit 80%, we're now leaving enough space to create the optimal learning.
That's right. And what you want to do is be able, as a school system, to tolerate a new apartment complex or something coming and going. You don't want to be doing this every year. So that threshold of best practice of 80 to 85% occupied is there, so that schools, schools can tolerate bigger years and leaner years, and you always see these bubbles coming through. And trustees, you know, last year, our senior class was the largest graduating senior class in the history of the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and significantly bigger than this year's class. And yet, as we look down in grades K through 10, there's some other bubbles coming in there, too. And we always look at those and say, was it 9/11? Was it the 2008 downturn? Was it the blackout? We don't always know, but there is an ebb and flow to students. So it is fascinating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? Great, thank you very much.